It's Tuesday, October fourteenth, two thousand twenty-five. Commissioner's courtroom, one sixty-two West First Street, Trinity County Courthouse, Grovedon, Texas. And Neil was going to carry us. Prayer?
Father, we come to you this morning, we thank you for the many blessings you've bestowed upon us and in our county. Lord, I ask that every word spoken here today is positive and not negative like some of the last meetings have been. We ask for your continued blessings upon Trinity County and its leaders. Thank you, in God's name we pray. Amen.
Say the prayer.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honored Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to me, Texas, one state under God, one individual.
session two thousand twenty-three, special session six, October sixth, special session two thousand.
Thanks, both of you.
Second. All in favor? Ah. Wait, there was just two leaving?
There's three judging.
Oh, here it is. I'm doing it. Any proclamation breast cancer awareness month? What's our next agenda there? Whereas October has long been recognized across America as breast cancer awareness month in an effort to raise public awareness about the importance of early detection. And whereas in two thousand twenty-five, an estimate of three, uh, three hundred and sixteen thousand nine hundred and fifty new cases of invasive can't breast cancer are expected to be diagnosed in women in the U.S., whereas approximately one out of eight, thirteen percent, in the U.S. will develop invasive breast cancer at some point in their life. Whereas in the U.S., estimated forty-two thousand one hundred and seventy women are expected to die in two thousand twenty-five in breast cancer. And whereas efforts to promote increased mammo-
I can't say that word yet.
It's mammo-.
Thank you.
Grace.
I heard. That was a bad one. Yeah, that's a bad one.
Screaming has resulted in the third Friday, October, being declared national by mo- great. Yeah, it's like a memory. And whereas breast cancer awareness month serves as an opportunity to increase awareness of the disease, to be encouraged individuals to have a plan to detect the disease in its early stages. Therefore, be it resolved at the Trinity County Commissioners' Court, we do hereby set aside and proclaim the month of October two thousand twenty-five as breast cancer awareness month in Trinity County. But it be further resolved that all county residents are encouraged to use this month to offer an, and opportunity to educate themselves about breast cancer and take proactive steps to reduce the risk and get appropriate screening.
Second.
All in favor? Was there anybody here that-
After we sign it, get a picture. She wants a picture.
Yeah. I just wondered if anybody was here for them.
No, let's just all stand up and get together.
We need some. Why didn't it shut down?
I'm glad it did, it's cold.
Sixty-seven.
It's getting winter, I guess. We didn't have no official bonds, number six. Number seven, discussing act of approval on personal action forms.
Judge, is this one in here? He's, um, had a few questions about a couple of them.
I have a few questions too.
Yeah, um, there's Joshua Prots, um, Jerry Long, uh, Robert Boyd, Rocky Boyd. Um, there says, I guess the, the reasoning was checked other than it said Commissioner mandate. Um, two of them swapped from being full-time to part-time. One of them left and, uh, I personally myself talked to, to one that left. Uh, he lives in my precinct, I talked with him and then he left to get, he was getting out of this field and got a better job, got a better job opportunity, but not even in the same field. So I don't know how y'all feel about it, but I make a motion, we, uh, approve Wes Cockrell, Angela Haw- Hawton, Richard Harrelson, Amber Sykes, and I'm not gonna be making a motion for those three because it has noth- I don't even know what Commissioner mandate means.
Tell me, on Wes', it says tac notice submitted under remarks. What does that mean?
Yeah.
What's it saying?
I saw that.
On Wes Cockrell's personal action form, it says tac notice submitted under remarks.
Why didn't we get a copy of it?
What does tac notice, what's that mean?
I don't know, but it's not normal, you know?
It has to do with the TCIC.
His license.
Oh, okay.
His license.
Oh, his license.
Like, who's licensing? Well, he's licensed to be on that radio.
Oh.
And through tac or through-
So they were notified?
What is it?
TCIC.
TCIC, that's what they're talking about.
So he was notified that he was, they're notified that he was leaving.
That's what that-
On Joshua Cross, would like full payout of time accrued. It says he's going from full-time to part-time.
Yeah, um-
Is that typical when he leaves out?
It's, it's circled seasonal because he's going, he's, he's got offered another job in a different field, and I guess they're gonna just hold on to him or something.
Seasonal would be like having someone mow the grass in the summertime.
Yeah.
You know, I think criminals get pretty consistent throughout the year. Uh, but that was something I didn't understand, would like full payout of time accrued if he's, if he's not leaving. You know, he's, he's still part-time, is that right?
So that, that's still within my realm of my motion. I approve those ones and the three not to motion.
Excuse me, gentlemen, is there anyone from the Treasury's office in payroll there?
No.
No.
No, oh, okay. Uh, well, payout is required by, uh, law, but a person that changes, is, he's moving from full-time to part-time, county has to pay out his part-time.
Even though they're still employed with the county?
Yes, uh, Orrin looked into that with tac to make sure that was the legal process to do so, so that can answer that question for you, that is required, even if they're moving to another department. Now, if they were moving full-time from one department to another department, they would have to pay it out, uh, but moving from full-time to part-time, it has to be paid out.
Rebecca just, Rebecca just showed up.
Well, payroll should be there, I'm not sure why Orrin isn't there, unless he doesn't-
He's in a meeting.
No, because he's in a meeting.
Rebecca just showed up.
Rebecca's here.
Okay.
So my, my, just to update you on these, uh, personal action forms, um, on three of them says Commissioner mandate, and then on two of them, it says, on two of those three, it says would like full payout of, uh, uh, accrued time. Um, I made the motion to approve all of them except for the ones that say Commissioner mandate, because I don't know why that's even on there, number one. Um, and Bonnie, it's true that Bonnie, you know, that, that we have to pay out when they switch positions or whatever, then after this is corrected, I guess they will get a payout.
Yeah, so I'm not sure about the Commissioner mandate part, I don't fill these out, these are just coming from whoever filled them out. Um, when it comes to approved time, when they're going down to part-time, we pay out part-time, it has to be paid out.
Okay. I didn't know that.
Yeah, so fairly standard deck, that's what, that's one of the things they'll ought to be one from the government, is if that, why are they part-time and why do they have part-time on the books? They should be paid out for that. So the vacation, sick time, vacation, personal time, holiday time, all that time is county benefits, that can stay on books, and they can use it or whatever. It won't gain any more, but it can just stay there and sit there.
My motion is still on the table.
I made a second.
If it, if this gets corrected on the Commissioner mandate, which I've talked to, personally talked to one of them, and it has nothing to do with the Commissioner mandate, which I don't know what that is, um, once I get it-
Y'all can't give a mandate, y'all can't, I don't think y'all could give a mandate to where y'all would tell them how to manage the people, y'all would just give them a-
I don't know what this is, I mean, let's quit beating around the bush, but we got a motion and a second on the floor, let's vote on it, Josh.
All in favor?
Aye. So move.
Hey Rebecca, real quick, Sean gave an answer, but, uh, on Wes', it says tac notice submitted, is that just for the radio stuff? Or is that some sort of, like-
Notice of that he, that he don't need his license no more, I guess.
I have no idea what that means, I can't hardly read it. Um, I don't know.
We think-
I mean, tac, tac doesn't care.
We think that's got to do with the radios, but-
Then all of this back, it should have it on there.
Yeah, um-
It's the running rate, I mean, that's the first one we've ever seen.
I think it's, I think it's supposed to say two week, two notice submitted, if you'll look, I think that's a W B. Two notice submitted, it says to say two week notice, that's what I-
Oh, I see what you're saying.
Oh, alright.
T W notice submitted.
Yeah, I think it's supposed to say two week, but it looks like T W O notice submitted.
Okay.
There was one, he gave ample time.
That makes sense.
For those three that have the, the Commissioner mandate, they need to, they need to redo that and resubmit it to us.
They need to resubmit it?
Yeah, I made a motion to approve the rest of them except for those three.
Okay, alright, I will leave that now. Thank you.
Uh-huh. Okay, number eight, discussing act of approval on complete check register.
I'll address that before, uh, you have in your packet, uh, check register for the month of September, uh, grant total of one hundred fifty-two thousand dollars, uh, broken down, vendor total was six hundred twelve thousand, and of that six hundred twelve thousand, you can see at the bottom, I've broken out how much of that was from our book funds, uh, how much were, uh, were the principal interest loans payments made early, and how much there was for inmate housing, so that, that, it tells you about half of the vendor total of what that was made up of, try to give you a better breakdown, or at least show you a quick synopsis of it. If you got any questions, there is a, um, report that shows my department totals, my fund department, in addition to each department, uh, in your check registers on what checks were issued.
the way of the budget, so it's mandated from the court of the, the African flag.
But, Judge, you're not talking about the X item right now.
No, we're done with that.
Where are you through with it?
So you deny it?
Yes, to next week.
To next week?
Well, the next session that we got, they, they said they wanted to redo it, so redo it.
Okay, don't be ridiculous.
Okay, sir.
Do you have any questions on the invoice, uh, that we've had before, we're looking for you? Um, we are still receiving invoices and claims that will be approved back into the month of September this year, twenty-five, so we're still going to know, those are entered. Uh, separate system, um, there's really no, I'm not sure that we can break that down, but they'll start to show up on the, uh, September report, so when I submit the September month report, you'll see incomprehensible amounts still coming through on invoices and claims, full activity.
I'm making a motion, we approve it.
My second. All in favor? Uh, aye. Number nine, discussing act of approval on claims and invoices for disaster-related purchases.
You know, you're not there, the list of, excuse me, uh, wrote materials and items that we're still capturing, uh, they'll always call these coded with this job code, so at any time you want us to stop generating this report to you, uh, before we can, but if we need to run it for a period of time, uh, we can also do that later today.
Ours is laying on our table there.
Yeah, it's not funny, you're packing it.
I'm making a motion to approve. Discuss an act on approved of budget, budget amendments for fiscal year two thousand twenty-five.
Uh, I only got two in your packet this time, this is from Robin Bridge, we sent three, we sent four on the transfer rate budget savings, pay over the principal interest loans early, those are the amounts that needed to, um, uh, to change the budget, so that it equals the amount that's paid.
So move.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Number eleven, receive information on district court order and setting salaries for Trinity County Auditor and Assistant Auditors for fiscal two thousand twenty-six.
That's just, we have to go through the court so it's undocumented, uh, no things were made into the budget that the court hadn't already approved, so that's just a formality to see the district court order to be filed in the district court.
So it's in line with the one and a half percent for the two employees? It's in line with that one and a half, is in line with that one and a half percent all the rest employees got?
Mm-hmm, yes.
I'm making a motion to approve.
No, no need it, it's just received.
No, no, just received.
Yep.
Hundred ninety-nine thousand six hundred and forty-one, thirty-four. Number twelve, request for approval for county auditor to post job opening for budget part-time grant assistant.
I know there's a hiring freeze, so I did not want to put out a, a job opening, uh, without the court, uh, approval, so that we can at least, uh, and Vicky can start looking at possible job candidates for part-time assistants to help her, and, uh, so I didn't want to cross it, I didn't want to put that out there until I'm in court.
Now, Bonnie, uh, we had talked about this before, and this money is gonna be paid out of the money we got from FEMA for, uh, Vicky doing all the paperwork.
Yeah, for administrative assistance on the FEMA funds, yes.
Yes.
Moving forward, it's gonna look for grant stuff, correct?
Yes, yes.
Yeah.
I, personally, I don't see anything wrong with going out and, and looking for somebody, but we'll approve it before they're hired.
Yeah.
What do you think about that, Judge?
The decision to get the applications, and then once the court lists the hiring freeze, we can, uh, Vicky can bring to the court recommendations on hiring before we hire them.
So, in other words, we're gonna have two part-time?
Yes, in that department, there will be two part-time.
Okay.
Vicky and one more.
Yep. But it's gonna be paid out of administrative, that she got us the grant.
Yes.
Okay, I make that, I, I make that a form of motion, go ahead and go out for it, for, uh, applications, and then it'll be approved by the court before anybody's hired.
Second.
Yes, sir.
All in favor? Aye. Okay, number thirteen, review of the scoring administration services for the Texas General Land Office grant and selected grant administrator services and county improvement.
Got a lady here to speak?
Yeah.
From Grant Works.
We have two administrators here, um, I'm Michelle Bobo for Grant Works, Judy Langford from Langford Community Management Services.
Let me talk real quick, if you don't mind.
Okay.
I sat on a committee, on this committee here, that was part of the, the grading of it or whatever, so I'd like to, you know, one of y'all wanna make the motion to do it, because I was part of the committee, or however you wanna do it.
There's no motion.
Nothing?
I'm asking to review it, it doesn't say to act.
Review the score.
So I believe, I believe that it, it was supposed to say, I don't know, but, uh, we did the scoring a couple weeks ago, and then it was gonna have to be submitted in front of the court to basically approve, or take the recommendation or not from what the committee said.
Her who, which company? We got two.
There's two companies, and there was two companies that were submitted, and, and that was what was graded, went on a grade scale, and then the committee is submitting this, this grade to the court, I guess basically who won, who had a better grade than the other, and the court needs to decide if they're gonna go with that recommendation or not. But it doesn't say discuss an act on there, so, or discuss an award or anything like that.
I guess I'm still kinda confused. Ms. Bobo, you're representing Grant Works.
Correct.
And ma'am, you're representing who?
Langford Community Management.
That's two different companies.
Correct.
So we're either going with one or the other.
That's right, we both submitted proposals, we all went out for, requested for, uh, proposals for grant administration, we both submitted proposals, your selection review-
I don't have a thirteen, do y'all have a thirteen?
Your selection review committee should have scored those and recommended the court, and y'all take action on which one to go with.
Yeah.
Judy, would that, would you say would be fair?
Yes.
Lexford?
Correct. It just says review the scoring.
Oh.
This is, up top, so we all sit on the committee.
What, what exactly does this grant involve?
Yes, ma'am. Judge, can she speak?
Yes.
Good morning.
Morning.
Judy Langford, I'm the president of Langford Community Management Services. This is for the possibility of the county applying for GLO, General Land Office funds for the two thousand twenty-four disaster. So there were, the county score is fairly high, as far as when you look at the, um, the numbers that GLO has put out there for this program, that it will be up to two applications, somewhere between five hundred thousand and five million dollars apiece.
This is, this is the, well, there's two jobs we can apply for, one we're gonna try to go up to the roof, and another out there at community center.
Okay.
Shelter slash community center, that's the two jobs, that's, that's the one we were gonna go after.
And then it was gonna have to be submitted in front of the court to basically approve, or take the recommendation or not, from what the committee said.
Her who, which company? We got.
Uh, there, there's two companies, and there was two companies that were submitted. And, and that was what was graded, went on a grade scale, and then the committee is submitting this, this grade to the court. I guess basically who won, who had a better grade than the other, and the court needs to decide if they're gonna go with that recommendation or not. But it doesn't say discuss an act on there, so. Or discuss an award or anything like that.
I guess I'm still kinda confused. Ms. Bobo, you're representing Grant Works.
Correct.
And ma'am, you're representing who?
Langford Community Management.
That's two different companies.
Correct.
So we're either going with one or the other.
That's right, we both submitted proposals, when y'all went out for requests for, uh, proposals for grant administration. We both submitted proposals, your selection review.
I don't have a thirteen, do y'all have a thirteen?
Your selection review committee should have scored those and recommends the court, and y'all take action on which one to go with.
Yeah.
Judy, would that, would you say would be fair?
Yes.
Lakeford.
Correct. It just says review the score.
Oh.
Atop, so y'all sit on the committee.
What, what exactly does this grant involve?
Yes, ma'am. Judge, can she speak?
Yes.
Good morning.
Morning.
Judy Langford, I'm the president of Langford Community Management Services. This is for the possibility of the county applying for G L O, General Land Office funds, for the two thousand twenty-four disaster. So there were, the county scores fairly high, as far as when you look at the, um, the numbers that G L O has put out there for this program. That it will be up to two applications, somewhere between five hundred thousand and five million dollars apiece.
This is, this is the, there's two jobs we can apply for, one we're gonna try to go up to the roof, and another out there at community center.
Okay.
Shelter slash community center, that's the two jobs, that's, that's the one we were.
Yes.
Gonna go after.
And ultimately, the work has to have a tieback to the disaster, so that's, that's gonna be coming up. The, uh, it hasn't been announced yet as far as the applications being available, but completing pre-procurement before that occurs is a great idea. Because G L O doesn't give a lot of time, once they announce the pre-apps, if you will. And then they only give you sixty days, once they've selected your project, to get a full application written and submitted to them. So this just puts you in a really solid place for purposes of submitting applications.
We have to approve one of the two companies, and also approve, the next, number fourteen will be the, uh, engineer, engineering firm.
But we can't do that, because it's not worried right on the agenda, am I right?
Doesn't say vote right here.
Correct.
You're correct about that, you'll have to take, bring that back to court. You can review the, the scoring if you prefer, but you'll have to approve it at the next commissioner's court meeting.
What is that, how does that work time-wise, like, we, we won't have another meeting for two weeks?
It's fine, they haven't set a deadline, like she said, yet, with the G L O for the applications. But you wanna do it sooner rather than later, but the next agenda would be.
Can we just table thirteen or fourteen?
Bring them back.
Bring them back.
Yeah.
Y'all have to.
Yeah.
Y'all are real close to.
On the score?
Yes, ma'am.
That's not, that's not, it's not terribly unusual. Um, both companies have been around for about the same amount of time, and worked with a number of projects.
We have never used you, y'all have we?
You, you used us for the application for the, uh, C W D G. The Community Wildfire Grant.
Okay, okay, yes, yes, okay.
I'll make a motion with table, um, thirteen, and then.
And fourteen.
And fourteen, if you can go above at the same time, everybody's been separate.
I'll call it, and then we'll do it. Number fourteen.
You need, I second that motion.
Do we have to have a?
Table it.
Yeah.
I made the motion to table it, he'll second it, and then we're gonna vote on thirteen.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, number fourteen.
Make a motion, we table that one as well.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, number fifteen. Discuss an act on approval and resolution between Trinity County Sheriff and Tech Dot Agreement for the use of right-of-way and, uh, safety equipment in connection with Motor Vehicles Crime Prevention Authority grant.
Tech Dot and Sheriff's Office go in agreement together that they can use the right-of-way to.
Make a motion, approve it.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So moved.
Yeah, I can only two gave.
Discuss an act of sheriff's department accepting donations, five hundred from Skaggs Record Service and five hundred from Williams Record Service for the purchases of tasers.
I think I will, but to do it. Make a motion, approve it.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So moved. Seventeen, discuss an act for election ballot for the Trinity Appraisal Board of Directors.
Judge, I, uh, I received a phone call from one of the board members, Mr. Evans. And, uh, he said that he wasn't gonna run again. Um, and that he is going, he was representative for the school here in Groton. And that one, they went, he went and talked to them and notified them, and so they decided to put, um, one of their board members on there. Um, so we're gonna have to write him in, if we give the board member any points, we need to write him in as a write-in.
So they're gonna bring it back then?
No, no, we're gonna vote today.
Hey, the school, the school voted the other day, and with their votes, and Jason Dew is the president over there, and he's gonna be their representative.
I see, okay.
Well, I make a motion, if we, uh, put Jason Dew in where Ivy Evans was, and we split our votes equally between all five candidates.
I second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So moved. Number eighteen, discuss an act of approval on bids for tax resale properties for Trinity County appraisal history.
Two in Lake Hill, I make a motion with approval.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Number nineteen, discuss an act on funding the October eighteenth Fall Community Cleanup Day.
Judge, I had, um, Lisa put this on the agenda. Um, we need to figure out what we're gonna do, because used to, we could, with the grant money, we could go to different, um, deals, two different events. Now, they'll only fund one, so, um, it can, they'll fund two days, but it has to be consecutive days, which that don't work out with our plan of doing one in the spring and one in the fall. So we need to decide how we're gonna pay for this, and what we're gonna do, um.
You mean the whole cleanup, or just the?
This time it's just the dumpsters. This time it's just the dumpsters that are being done, um.
Deadcocks paying for the dumpster?
Tech Dot's not paying for zero.
Oh.
For anything.
They, they, they got it funded last year, but this year.
They funded, they already funded it for the, for their April one, they only do one in per, per year now.
Yeah.
So Bonnie, what does that cost? Off the top of your head, do you know?
Well, I don't think Vicky had gotten any, uh, if you've gotten any quotes from your.
I have talked to, I've talked to, to, um, it's not Piney Woods now, whatever it is. Live Oak, I've talked to Live Oak, and they know about the schedule and everything, and gonna get the dumpsters to us, but we never talked pricing, I didn't, or anything like that.
You need, you need a quote on that, but I don't know if they've gone out from last year or not. It'd be whatever it was last year.
Randy, did you get an email from them, at Live Oak?
I never see anything with Live Oak.
Sonny called me, the, the guy in charge, he called me last week or week before, which he's been out, so, um, he wanted to email, so I, no, I just gave him the phone number uh, for his secretary to email some paperwork over, maybe that'll have the price in it, um.
So all, all ties before fall and spring, Deadcock has paid for the dumpsters.
From what I've heard, yeah, but then they just started doing, they just start.
Well, last year we did, last time we, they only paid one, uh.
But I think we applied for, did we apply for the extra funds or something, or?
We, yeah, we did, uh, but then, then they got restricted, now it's just one, one application, and when we do it, they, they won't pay for it yet.
That committee over there, they have, uh, Deadcock gives this over to a committee, and they have so many, so much money in a fund to go around to their, to all their counties that apply for this. And if there's, let's say there's ten thousand dollars left over that nobody got, they let you reapply, uh, for, you know, extra funds. So that's, I think that's what we did last year, or year before, or whatever, but this year, obviously, they got a lot stricter, and now it's just one event.
Well, Judge, we've already, uh, put the word out that we were gonna have it in October and April, like we've always done. The people are expecting it. Uh, I've been getting calls for a month and a half about it, wanting to know the date before we ever set the date. So it would be a big disappointment to not have it, and I, I think it's a great deal. It, uh, sure keeps a lot of the stuff from being in our ditches and on the side of our roads.
I've got a lot of, uh, I've got a lot of feedback from adult probation too, and got a lot of people, probably a few people signed up.
How much per dumpster did it cost last year?
Bonnie, do you know how much per dumpster?
Last year?
Um, I wanna say, I can look it up, uh, I'm thinking it wasn't that terribly expensive, just for the dumpsters to be hauled off. Uh, you know, I think we, we can split it on the Broken Ridge, maybe a thousand apiece, or maybe, or something.
What about the contingency fund? Res, uh, the.
Contingency reserve?
Uh huh.
That's the.
I think the very first year, when we started the very first year, I think it was five hundred dollars, um, a dumpster. And for some reason, something's telling me. Something's telling me seven hundred, I thought, or something like that.
And we need three, at my.
Three, two, and two, so seven.
Seven.
And then.
Five thousand, no.
I think it's money well spent, is that including the tire trailer?
No.
One tire trailer?
Tire trailer's twenty-five hundred, three thousand dollars. We haven't, I didn't know how this grant was gonna work out, so we haven't really talked about tire trailer or anything, you know?
Well, they sure called it.
And the, if we wait for the grant, it's the spring, is there a limit on the money that they'll reimburse?
Thirteen thousand, I think's what it is.
But that'll just be for the one time of year.
It'll just be for that event there.
It won't, it's not covering this grant at all, I mean, this, this time, is it at all?
The October one's not gonna be covered.
No money there.
So what we actually need is seven, seven dumpsters and a, and a trailer tire.
Well, that's if we could, I, I'm sure they could probably get us a tire trailer to your place before Saturday, if we contacted them, contacted that place.
Do you wanna use the seven one, like?
I think so, I mean, that was the cheapest one, that was the cheapest one then, so.
Yeah, we don't want but one.
Yeah, we just want one trailer, get a cost, I guess get a cost of it, or.
Okay, I can call them and say if we can get it.
Now, if this event is this Saturday, we probably won't get billed for, for, for next meeting, wouldn't you say? For, so we can see how much this trailer is gonna cost, and I guess we can revisit it this next meeting, I mean, what do y'all think? Cause we're not gonna.
Make a motion to go ahead and, and do it.
But the estimate right there is about, about ten thousand dollars, is that correct?
Well, you just said.
Five thousand for the trailer, I mean.
It's in between twenty-five hundred and three thousand for the tire.
Trailer would be eight.
So eight thousand dollars, you know?
Eight to ten.
You can go ahead and, you know, and do that, and you come back later to decide where you want to use the funds from, if that's.
I mean, this is a county, this is a county-wide, you know, everybody gets to benefit from it.
Yes.
Great deal.
Everybody benefits from it, so I make a motion that we, we get the, uh, three, four, five, seven, seven dumpsters and order us a truck to put the tires in.
The tires are real important, right? Tires are real important.
They really are, do what?
This is, the item is to discuss an act on the funding.
Table it till next go around.
We're gonna table it until next meeting.
Well, you could indicate it'll just be paid from something other than the grant, which would be contingency fund.
Yeah, paid out of the, make that the form of the motion, that it'll be paid out of continuously, but.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, I got the dumpsters handled, I just don't, I haven't, we haven't talked about the tire trailer. Um, because the grant wasn't funded, and I didn't know how we was gonna do all that, so.
So Bonnie, uh, on that thirteen and fourteen, we gonna.
Yes.
You gonna have to send it to Lisa about how to put it on there again, or something, right?
Uh, yeah, we'll just, uh, have the bill reviewed and discussed approval for those firms, who will be working.
Okay, thank you. I make a motion with adjourned.
All in favor?
Second, aye, or second, I'll second, who's second?
All in favor?
Aye.